Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Select Board. Our first item this evening is to go into executive session. So as such, I will be making the motion that the Board vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Subsection 21A1, to discuss a bullying complaint against the Select Board, and further to invite Town Administrator Blythe Robinson, Human Resource Director Scott Bragdon, and Executive Assistant Judith Lozardi. The Board will reconvene into open session to conduct the rest of the meeting. Further discussion?
Second.
Okay. There'll be a poll vote, so Kevin Calcutt, aye.
C.C. Van Tyn, aye.
Christopher Weider, aye.
Very good. We'll see you after executive session. Good evening, and welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. It is Tuesday, February 4th at approximately 7:30 PM. My name is Kevin Calcutt, and I'm joined here by my fellow Board members, Chris Weider and C.C. Van Tyn. We're also joined by our Town Administrator Blythe Robinson and our Executive Assistant Judith Lozardi. As a reminder, this meeting is being audio and video recorded consistent with the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It will be rebroadcasted to NCTV's government cable channel, as well as uploaded to NCTV's YouTube channel. With that, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Blythe, would you mind taking us through our agenda this evening?
Absolutely. So, it's a shorter agenda than we typically have. We have two items after public comment, two action items. One is to consider ratifying the appointment of the Public Works Director that I'll be bringing you, and he will be here tonight to meet with you. To consider appointing a tax possession custodian to, for the purpose of auctioning off town-owned properties acquired through foreclosure. And for discussion, to discuss amendments to the Board's public comment policy. We also have one warrant to approve, and tonight we do not have any minutes. And we have a second public comment policy, public comment period that we've put on our agenda tonight.
Very good. Thank you. All right, so our first item tonight is public comment period. During this period, we invite anybody who's attending tonight to come up for approximately three minutes to share with the Board. As a reminder, these items should be within the scope of what the Board does manage, and if we determine that what's being said is inappropriate or unfounded, that the Chair does reserve the right to terminate that speech at any time. With that, would anybody like to join us this evening for public comment? Mr. Rosenberg? If you could, please remember just to sign in.
I did already.
Knew you would. Thank you.
My name is David Rosenberg. I live at 123 North Street. I'd like to make a public comment about public comments. While I certainly understand the desire and necessity of the Board to function efficiently and not get distracted with tangential issues that other, that people bring up, I do think that it would be appropriate when there's an agenda item under discussion on which a decision is likely to be made, if somebody has a fact that appears to be unknown to the Board but would be relevant to their decision, there should be an opportunity to state that fact, to help the Board avoid making a decision based on missing information or misinformation. Since I think that that should be limited to providing facts to the Board, not speeches, I could well see that that could be limited to a shorter time than the three minutes, perhaps 30 seconds or something, to just point out some mistake or some other piece of information. I noticed that Mr. Calcutt had two drafts of revised policy, and the second one seemed to allow comments like this, and therefore, I'm in support of the second of those two drafted changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for public comment tonight? Hi, Sue.
Hi, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Good evening. I will do my best to keep this under three minutes, but have seen others go a tad longer and would hope the same courtesy would be extended to me. I am here this evening to request that the Select Board establish an incoming/outgoing email policy. I am being completely transparent and coming before this Board publicly, even though retaliation is a real possibility. I have lived in this community for 25 years. I have worked for the town for 10 years. I have worked hard, and along with the Affordable Housing Trust, we have developed an affordable housing program that is a respected program throughout the Commonwealth. The trust has been supported by Town Meeting and the Community Preservation Committee. I have presented at training programs and frequently received calls from other towns for advice on how to set up a trust similar to this town's. I am available to speak with any resident that has questions regarding the program, and I am open to any ideas and suggestions someone may have to offer. I do not wish to work in a hostile work environment any longer, and I am here tonight to stand up for me. I realize we work in the public sector and provide services to people who sometimes don't agree with us, and are free to voice their objection. That is the nature of our business. What is not acceptable is for individuals to personalize their complaints with derogatory comments with the unacceptable attacks on employees that should not be tolerated. By ignoring these attacks, like you have, you are enabling those individuals to carry on their bad behavior, like spoiled children who don't receive consequences for their actions. I have two examples that I will share this evening, but I think the time has come to establish some ground rules. While I understand and agree with the public records law, I do not believe that it was intended to allow individuals to harass, insult, and threaten lawsuits. An email was received by the Finance Director last Wednesday, January 29th, at 7:50 PM. The Select Board and the Town Administrator were copied on this email. I also have an older email, will show that this writer has been doing this for years. Quite frankly, the fact that no one on this Board or at this table found it necessary to respond to an individual who indicates that a female employee should be replaced by a dog is disturbing to me, and it should have been disturbing to all of you as well. It is degrading and should not be tolerated by any Board, employee, or allowed to take place at work. I should not have to sit at my desk any longer and be concerned about my safety and the safety of others based on the content of the emails I have read. There are hundreds of them, all with the same tone and language against many current and former employees of the town of Norfolk. I am hoping the Board will take the necessary measures to make changes to stop this type of behavior. So the email that I'm going to read into the public record tonight was sent by Peter Chipman. It was sent to Todd Linmark with a CC to C.C. Van Tyn, Chris Weider, and Kevin Calcutt, and it said, "I would still like to get the numbers of this captioned organization. Given the fact that nothing of substance is publicly published gives me concern. Does the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust just take taxpayers' fund and then lose money while the selectmen ignore this? How can a nonproductive operation spend so much on salaries? Lose money on every transaction?"
Sue, you have a couple more seconds.
"Why can't the private market replace this money pit operation? Why don't the selectmen stop the committee's waste of taxpayers' money? State election year? Someone angling for a judgeship? Does the Town Administrator need a little buddy? Wouldn't buying her a dog be cheaper?"
Understood. Thank you, Sue.
I guess I'll be back at the next meeting to read the next one. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else for public comment this evening? Mr. Alex? How are you doing tonight, sir?
Bernie Alex, 40 North Street. A few weeks ago, we had a conversation here pertaining to electronics being brought in, to maybe electronics taking over if somebody cannot make it to a meeting.
For real participation. That's right.
Okay. I would like to direct those people to the Iowa caucuses. Main reason I'm here is when we were building this building, the building commissioner came to me and asked me if I would go with him down to the Pondville site, I had a professional camera at the time, and document and witness what is open medical and human trash, which is going down the east side of the hill over there at Pondville Hospital. Is anything being done at all over there? This is going down, and it's going into a river down below. We have a building up above, and different buildings here, there, and everywhere that have been abandoned. The site's been abandoned. If this has happened to any of us at our homes, we would have the town stepping in right away. I know it belongs to the church, but when the church abandons property, it should come under the exact same jurisdiction as anybody else in town. There is now being built, as you probably know, a rather large recreation area right next to it. Now, this recreation area is going to bring a lot of kids for sports, and a lot of their siblings that could care less about sports. But right next door, we are maintaining a hazard, and that hazard, there is no way of keeping people out. This place should be fenced with at least an eight-foot-high chain-link fence, and I believe we probably already would have that on the laws in this town. Whether or not they are a church, they still have to follow the rules. Somebody gets hurt over there, there are going to be a line of cheap suits outside the door here in the morning, and they're all going to be looking to get their monies, because they know if they sue the archdiocese, they got a lot of money, they got a lot of time. This town doesn't have a lot of money, and we cannot afford to spend all of that money it's going to take to protect ourselves. We're going to do like this town has previous down the line, when a bunch of lawyers come in and scare us, we cave in. That's one of the reasons this town is in such a problem. I don't know if our lawyers...
Couple more seconds.
Okay. I don't know if our lawyers can write up a, something that send it to the church to tell them that they have an area that has to be, it's an attractive nuisance, and the town is going to be liable for it.
Understood.
So I just want to cover our asses.
Thank you for the creative wording. Much appreciated. Anybody else for public comment this evening? I'm seeing none, so we will be moving on to our first action item tonight, and that is to please consider ratifying the appointment of the Public Works Director as recommended by the Town Administrator. I believe said Town Administrator just went to go find our candidate, and should be back Maybe not.
He couldn't have gotten far away.
Yeah, apparently he did. How's it going?
Good evening. How are you doing?
Kevin Calcutt.
Tom Temple.
Nice to meet you, Tom.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm C.C.
Christopher Weider.
Nice to meet you.
So, as you know, we said goodbye to a long-tenured and loved DPW Director Bob McGee, who retired in December. And before that, because he gave us notice, which was great, to start the process of replacing him, and that has been, it's taken us a little longer than we hoped it would. There, I don't know if anyone saw it, but there was a recent article in the Worcester Telegram this past weekend about how challenging it is with many people retiring, as Bob did in the public sector, to find people who are ready to move into the roles that, you know, the important roles that we have in any community. And so, we undertook a process in November and got down to three candidates, and for various reasons, those candidates decided to withdraw from the process, and we decided that the best thing to do was to start again, because at the end of the day, I, Scott, and the team wanted to bring you the best candidate, you know, to take this job, because there's so much that Public Works is responsible for, and wanted to make sure that the person that we put in front of you, and I believe tonight that that's Mr. Temple, has those skills and abilities to do that. So, we started again, and this time, we received 13 applications. Previously, it was 15. And conducted a process by which we reviewed the resumes. We had a first round of interviews that included myself and Scott, as well as a DPW Director from another community not related to us, to provide some perspective, because while I have dabbled at being the interim Public Works Director myself in times, I'm not, you know, an expert in all things, and Scott is, you know, his area is HR. And then we narrowed, we interviewed six people. We narrowed it down to three. And then I also felt it was important to make sure that, you know, this is a critical major department head, and I wanted to make sure that the other departments that work with them and depend on them would have some input into the decision in terms of getting to meet the three finalists, spending some time with them, and providing us with some feedback about that. So, the Superintendent of the Highway Department spent some time taking each of the three candidates on a tour, as did the Police Chief, as did the Recreation Director. I was not, neither Scott or I were involved in going on any of those, these were all done independently. And based on all that, and we've come to the conclusion, and I've brought Mr. Temple here tonight, so I'd like to start by offering him the opportunity to tell you more about himself in his own words, and then, as we did with the Fire Chief, I'm sure you all have some questions you'd like to ask, and then after that, I'd like to tell you why I think he's the candidate that I would like to bring on to work for the town of Norfolk. So, Tom, if you would.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Tom Temple. I've been involved with Public Works for, you know, well over 36, 37 years. I've had a good engineering background. I worked for Boston Surveying Consultants before, excuse me, before I started with the city of Marlboro. I was probably the, I think I was the second youngest Assistant City Engineer in the state when I was with Marlboro. My engineering background has helped me through various construction projects throughout my career. I've built sewer treatment plants, pumping stations, I have done P Wed projects, I've done reconstruction state projects. Most recently, I was involved with a water treatment facility which we constructed. It was a $10 million facility, and we came 1.98 million under budget and on time. I worked very hard to make sure that we're fiscally sound in all the different projects and jobs that I've done throughout my career. I take pride in what we do for work. I have a great background in construction and paving, as well as water, sewer. I've been in charge of forestry, parks, cemeteries. I've had my experience normally 10 cemeteries, and between 89 and as little as 20 employees been responsible for over my career. It's been a great career. I love working with the general public. I get back to people in a timely manner, and at least tell them that we're looking into whatever their concerns are, and follow up within 24 hours to make sure that they know that their questions or their concerns are being addressed. As far as snow and ice operations, I redid the two communities that I worked in, revamped the routes to reduce the amount of products that we were putting down. We cut our products in half, most recently in the town of Chatham, by half the amount of materials that they used to put down, and saving money and do a better job at the roadway winter operations for sanding, plowing, et cetera. I don't know what else you're looking for, but I can certainly ask any questions.
That was fantastic. Thank you. From my perspective, you know, I'm sure that you go to any town in Massachusetts, and among the top three issues you hear from people are the condition of the roads. It's no different here. So, if you could talk to me a little bit about your approach to pavement management and long-term planning to that effect.
Right. First, I'd find out if you have a, if you have a program in place yet. I do know that you have some people in-house that have worked for Bader. We recently hired Bader Company to perform our, do a study on our roadways and sidewalk areas, and with that, after we got the results back, we did a pavement index study on everything, and we determined what roads needed to be addressed and how we could do the most roadway and sidewalk reconstruction work and save as much money as we can and be fiscally sound. So we break it off into various sections, taking care of the most critical areas first, and working our way to those other areas. Walking routes to school are important. If you have any of the smaller kids, we make sure that those areas are squared away, as well as heavily traveled areas that may be in town that is a lot of foot traffic. As far as roadways, you look at the conditions of the roadways and what's appropriate for those roadways as far as the repair work. If it's something where you have minor cracking, but it's still issues, chances are you can get away with a melon overlay and use that process. If it's something where you see a lot of alligator-ing and a lot of things happening, it could mean that you have issues with the gravel-based material underneath, or drainage issues that you need to look further into what the problems are. If you're doing a full-depth reconstruction, I'm one of those people that make sure that we film the, all the infrastructure, the drainage and the sewer, if there's sewer in those areas, making sure that there's no issues with the existing pipe. If you have water mains in an area, if they need to be replaced, you look at the type of pipe it is, if it's AC, if it's, you know, just regular cast iron, or if it's ducted line, and you make calls if there's any lead services that need to be removed within the right-of-way layout, you take the appropriate action and then do the roadway reconstruction that you're looking to do. So, it's all a function of what you have in place, and if you don't have anything in place, that's not a problem, because we can certainly start going through an inventory of what you have for your roadways and break that down in a condition that, you know, I think you'll be more than happy with the outcome.
Very good. Thank you.
I have a couple, but I'll just start with one, and then just sort of organically. I note from your cover letter, the work that you're doing for your OSHA certificate, what other education do you have that specifically dovetails with what you perceive Norfolk's town, the town of Norfolk's needs are?
Oh, okay. I've got a lot of, a lot of background. I've had training in confined space, construction management, have had, we've had chainsaw safety, stop the bleeding, CPR, drainage, cross culvets, all of areas between Bay State Roads, as well as between Mass Highway Association, as well as other OSHA agencies, and DEP. I have numerous years, I certainly can give you, supply you with...
No, no, I just was curious if you were, like, you had an engineering background, or what your, your education background was prior to going into the public sector?
I think you're a licensed civil engineer.
I am not. I didn't, I didn't get that.
That's where... Then, my next question is, so you're in Chatham. You've been here for, there for about two years?
I've been there for four years.
Four years?
Almost four years.
2006. Let me remember my math. What's appealing to you about Norfolk?
It's a beautiful...
As opposed to Chatham, which is candidly maybe a little bit, maybe, just for the folks at home, the tiniest bit more interesting.
Well, I come from Marlboro. I grew up in Marlboro, Mass. As you saw, I worked at the city of Marlboro when I graduated from college. And I had some, some family members that got ill and passed, my in-laws, and then we, my brother-in-law ended up also, he has some mental health issues, so we're moving back now that they're both gone, and trying to take care of him, as well as my mother's getting on in here. So, it made more sense to move back this way, and then when I saw the advertisement in the paper, I thought this was a perfect fit. I had come to an OSHA training across the street at the library, and I thought it was a beautiful community, and I thought, what better, I'm going to apply, and hopefully I get it, so...
So, what did you see? What did you, what did you think of when you saw Norfolk? I mean, obviously, other than the OSHA training class, when you took the rides with the Police Chief, the, what did you notice? What stood out as far as positive things, things you thought maybe needed to be looked at, when you took those tours?
For the most part, the conditions of the roadway. There was the roads that we went on, there was definitely some need for repairs and work that needs to be done. I was, I was very surprised at the two, the two roundabouts in such a short distance. We're building two right now in Chatham that are 1,700 feet apart, and these certainly are a lot closer, so it was good to see that they do, they do work out here, which is, which is good. I thought that the people that I've met here, you know, just the staff, I was very impressed with, the way they handle themselves and the knowledge that they had when talking to them. You know, it was just a good feeling knowing that you're not coming in and, you know, people that are, that you're dealing with have a good work ethic as well, so I'm very excited about it.
What is sort of the, what is the flow chart, your flow chart in Chatham? So, in other words, you're the director, DPW. I know you've got like nine or, I mean, do you, I think it's park and recs, highways, snow and ice, street lighting, transfer station, fuel depot, operations, cemetery, lighthouse. Are they all, they were all under you?
They're all under me, yes.
So, do you each, what do you, how does your flow chart sort of work down there?
I have foreman in charge of the highway, foreman in charge of the transfer station, foreman in charge of public facilities, and a foreman in charge of parks and recs. Everything else is handled through, through my department as far as the lighting, the fuel, the maintenance division for the fleet maintenance. So, I have really four foremen, and everything just funnels down.
Okay.
I started a work, work order system, which we just, we just got underway, and that works really well, where they're using the tablets as they finish the jobs out in the field, they're able to hit and tell you that it's been completed, or the status of it, if it's something that needs immediate attention, we're able to regroup and take care of that issue first before we move on to the other projects we had already called DigSafe in for. But it's, it's, it's a good system, and hopefully, it's something that, you know, I'm not sure what the response is here in town for work, but I like to get things done in a timely manner and make sure that they're done properly and right the first time, so...
What kind of, what kind of transfer station system do you have? Here, we have, we give out, people buy tickets for each bag.
Okay. You pay as you throw?
Right.
Okay.
And then we charge for bigger items and things. How does that, and we just bought it, we just signed off to buy a new roll-off for what gets taken to the different landfills and recycling facilities. How does that compare to what you have? You have a rather large, I mean, it looks like it's about a million five budget for transfer station.
Yeah. So for that, yeah. And what we do is we charge window sticker, they can, and it's, it's hard because they're seasonal and you're regular residents, so there's seasonal prices. They pay for three to five bags, it's $5. Everybody else has a window sticker that they purchase for the year, and they can buy the window sticker and the beach sticker together, or separately. And then we have commercial haulers, and I'm not sure if you have commercial haulers that go to your transfer station, but we have two commercial haulers that are allowed to dump at the transfer station on the tipping floor. And, you know, the trash that we generate, probably, I think it's close to probably 7,000 ton a year, and the commercial haulers have about half of that that they bring in. So, it's, there's a lot going on. We have a lot of recycling, different areas at the facility. We have a lot of recycling, um, different areas at the facility. We're very active in trying to recycle, even though the recycling has no real market right now. The only thing that we're making money on right now is tin, metal, and newspaper. We were getting like probably forty dollars a ton for corrugated cardboard, but that has gone to by the wayside, and now we're paying them twenty dollars a ton to take that. So, um, it's, it's a big expense, and we're paying more for our recycling than we are for solid waste.
And, uh, you're familiar already, we have one wastewater treatment plant here, which takes care of a condominium project up behind us here, as well as some potential development here in the center. What's your experiences with wastewater treatment plants?
Um, we had two in Marlboro, the one that we built, I was intimately familiar with, because I was inspecting out there along with CDM, the engineering company that they hired to do that as the resident engineer. And we have a sewer treatment plant in Chatham, which service, the, it services lines that were put in in nineteen sixty-nine, where, which really is the core of the downtown, but the town appropriated thirty-three million dollars for sewer projects over the next thirty years, and right now they currently have four sewer projects going on with various pumping stations being built to go back to the treatment plant. So, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with, uh, with all operations, water and sewer side of things.
And lastly, how do you feel about GPSs and public works vehicles?
I love it. I'd like to have in my snow vehicles for the private contractors, too. It gives you minute-by-minute, which is a nice thing, because you can also see it on, on, on a screen in, in the dispatch area. It's, it's, it's a, it's a good thing, you know, it's not a bad thing, so.
Thank you.
Whether you view it as a good thing or a bad thing, you are joining us right in the midst of budget season this year, so I'd be remiss if I didn't ask you about your approach and experience with budgeting.
Well, I just went before the finance committee on Tuesday and presented my budget for the, on behalf of the department. Things went pretty well, um, so we'll see, you know. I prepare all, all my own budgets for the various divisions that I have, and then submit them, and, um, you know, we, we have our, a new, new format that they use this year, which was a little bit different than we had for the previous three years. But, we do a five-year capital budget, um, and go, I go through the equipment and make sure that the equipment that we have, it really needs to be replaced, it's getting replaced, and it's not just because we're trying to be frivolous, it's, it's on a need, what we use the most and what do we need to, to, you know, because we're, we're in a pool with everybody. You're in a pool with the police, you're in a pool with fire and DPW, and you know it's all being split across the board, so you gotta have common sense in what really needs to be done. And our life expectancy on our bigger vehicles are about thirteen years.
Good. Um, talk to us a little bit about your experience and what you found as being successful in relation to community engagement, ways that you found to connect with the community outside of emergency situations, et cetera.
I find that being upfront and honest with the residents, if there's an issue or a problem, if you're doing work, I'm a big proponent of, if you're doing work in front of somebody's house, when you leave, it should be better shaped than when you got there, meaning if, if you're, you know, doing work and you, you have paper and stuff that come out of the truck and, and, or material that you were using for paving, you shouldn't have any of that left over and sweep up the area, make sure it's, it's clean, uh, before you go to the next job. And talking to the residents, telling them what you're doing ahead of time, if they're, if they're out in the neighborhood, when you're doing the job, explain to them what's, what's happening. And I've always thought, excuse me, I've always been that person that if it wasn't acceptable to be done in front of my house, I wouldn't be doing it in front of theirs. So, uh, I, I think my crews get the, the same feeling when they're doing the work, they take pride in what they're doing and, and do a nice job, so I'm hoping that's the same thing here, so.
All right, guys, thank you.
Um, just to dovetail on what Kevin asked relative to budgets, again, I don't know that the resources are the same in Norfolk for tax money as are in Chatham. I'm gonna guess that they're less, but I don't have anything to back that up, other than having driven through Chatham. So, and I might, here, one of the things that we're currently dealing with is the idea of, of managing our budget so that we don't grow too quickly, that we price out the senior citizens from the town, for an example. Have you had any experience, I, I know that you have experience with budgets, have you had experience with lean budgets, with making cuts, with responding positively to a need to not grow beyond what the town can afford?
Yes, and, and I had a great mentor when I was with the city of Marlboro. We had to, you know, make sure that everything was just so, and we didn't overspend any of the line items and, and very fiscally sound. So, I, I have a pretty good background as, as that goes, and I'm not that person, I, if I, I had three recent jobs, one was, like I said, the ten million dollar, um, project, and I, I had a re, resurfacing, repainting and rehabilitation of one of our one point three million water, um, water storage tank. And that came in at one point two million dollars, and I think I completed it at nine hundred and ninety-eight and, and under budget and on time, and, and then a tornado came and had a little bit of damage with one of the raceways from one of the lease, lease agreements that we have, and, uh, so we're in the process of redoing a section of that that got, that scratched up, but, you know, saving money and being frugal, you know, I'm gonna do that, so.
Chris, anything else from your perspective?
I guess it goes, it goes actually with the budget a little bit, too, is that, how do you balance, I mean, you're coming from, how many highway workers do you have in Chatham?
I have five.
Five? Okay, so not very different from what we have here as far as manpower on the, on the ground? So, you're used to having small departments. I mean, obviously, your budget's a lot larger, our budget's much smaller. So, how do you balance trying to motivate and get a small group of people to accomplish, you know, some of these, these tasks that sometimes seem overwhelming? Because we, we think we have a highway department, so you think there's twenty people out there, and you realize there is only five.
Right.
So, how do you balance those numbers with a smaller budget?
I, you know, most of these gentlemen that I work with, that are, that are at the DPW, they're, they're hardworking and you deal with them on a lot on all the different, uh, emergency events that we deal with. So, you know, you know what the expectation is when you're doing certain projects and making sure that everybody pulls their weight to, to get the jobs done. Um, you know, it goes a long way saying thank you and appreciate you, you know, the work that you put into this, and, and, you know, I think they appreciate it, we appreciate it, and knowing that you only have few bodies to do jobs, we, we also help out other divisions when they need work, so we may give them a guy that's needed in, in parks and grounds, uh, and then we'll take one when we need one, when someone's out sick, or if we have something that's pressing. So, we, we're interchanging the, the, the employees, and believe it or not, they like the change, where they're not doing the same thing every day, so they're not paving the roadway, they might be over helping out facilities on a certain day, or going to the transfer station, because they have their, uh, special equipment operators license, have their CDL, or they have hoisting license that are needed there. So, it, it ends up being a, a more conducive place, and, and also, um, when it came time for overtime, we started doing a outside of division overtime, uh, so if someone was out sick and the position wasn't filled and we needed them at the transfer station, because it's, it's really busy, especially during the summertime. We had to juggle because of contract agreements. They had a lot of vacation time, they had built up over years, especially a lot of the, the senior employees, and with the new contract, they had to use up ten weeks, eight weeks, nine weeks. That's a lot of time when you, when you have few people that are working, so it ended up being a case where we're able to subsidize the, the manpower by pulling from the other divisions, and so we, we started an out-of-division overtime list, so it was fair and equitable, so if someone was out sick, they went through the call list of the other division and, and were able to be backfed through that way, so everything was fair and everybody appreciated the fact that, you know, they were considered, and it was, it wasn't just giving it to the same person all the time, so it, it goes a long way.
Okay.
Cece, anything else?
Nope.
I think I'm good as well.
So, I just wanted to help you understand why, why Tom is the person that, that's here before you tonight. Um, you know, we, we had a small pool, but we had a, a strong pool. Um, we, the six candidates that we initially interviewed, um, four of them were already public works directors, but not all of them had all the experience, and I think listening to Tom and, and when we, when we speak with the bud, about the budget on Saturday, I think you all know that public works has quite a span of control of things that they take care of, and not all of our candidates had experience. One of them looks like, looked like a great candidate on paper, but never had the responsibility of taking care of parks and, and, and grounds, uh, which in Norfolk is important. Um, I wanted to make sure that we brought, uh, someone who had the, the most experience of the things that were like ours. You just learned, uh, that, you know, their highway department in Chatham is five people, and ours is, is similar. And so, I think it is important to have someone who brings the experience of dealing with maybe, working with less than is ideal sometimes to get all the work done, um, but yet has had the experiences in lots of different areas. Snow and ice and revamping routes that are more efficient. Tom's been through a, a reconsideration of how to, to manage and run the transfer station in Chatham, and that's something we need to deal with in the coming months, and we're gonna talk about that on Saturday with the budget. Restructuring water rates, that was, uh, rates were looked at last year and, and increased significantly, but that's something that is a very particular area, uh, that not every person has experience with, and we need to make sure we stay, um, on top of that in the future and have someone who can handle that sort of work. Major projects, he's listed a couple, and, you know, we will have major projects in the future, and somebody who can handle those, bring them in on time and, and under budget is important. And someone who has dealt with, um, union relationships and, and resident relationships and other department relationships, I think, is also critical, and I've been impressed with what I've learned about Tom in that area. And also, that, um, we've talked to some of his references, and what they tell us about him is that he's got great technical skills, he's built overtime, um, and that he is the kind of department head and coworker, uh, that is supportive of, of people that he works with, but also has really high expectations, and I think our residents have high expectations. And I want, you know, the person that we hire to have that as well. Um, and I think that the types of experiences he's had will be a big, a good fit with where we would like to see Norfolk go to. I think we have been a little bit in a reactive mode for a number of years, and I'm not saying that that's negative, but I think it's, it's time to start working towards being more proactive. Certainly, we've heard about it in the area of roads, and, um, I want somebody who can bring that thought process and those skills to be able to achieve that for us. And, um, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, he wants to move back to this area, which is good for us. And, so when I looked at the, the three finalists and I took in the feedback from the other department heads and looked at the candidates that we had, um, we, I think we had to find someone who's the best fit, who's gonna bring all that skillset, um, and help take the, the community where it needs to, I think it needs to go, and what your expectations are, and I think Tom is the best person to do that, so that's why I'm, I'm recommending him. And so, tonight, we're not here to talk about what the contract would be, we have had conversations with him to make sure that what we had advertised for this job is something we can hire within, and we are, Scott and I are comfortable that we're there, and we would schedule that on Saturday's agenda to talk about that in, in more detail, and hopefully, if, if you agree with the appointment tonight, that we will bring that to you to, um, approve after the budget session Saturday. So, I'm happy to answer questions, or?
Chris, do you have any questions?
So, um, so we had thirteen applications, and how many were interviewed, how many had interviews?
Six.
Six had interviews.
And there was, let me, let me qualify, we interviewed six, there was another can, there were two other candidates from the first search that we didn't interview a second time in this, who, who reapplied.
Okay. So, we interviewed six. How many of those six were DPW directors? Do you remember?
I'm gonna look at Scott, but I'm gonna say four. Four.
Okay. And then we narrowed it down to three, assuming the three were all DPW directors already?
They are, correct. Yes.
Okay. Cece, any questions?
So, um, I guess two, but I think we're tabling one, so anything having to do with the financial, we're dealing with on Saturday?
Right.
Okay, so I will table my financial question till Saturday, good times. And then, I know that he wasn't part of the search, but did you inquire of Bob McGee about his knowledge about any of these, or what he thought that the role should be? Bob was-
He and I talked about it generally before he retired, but no, he was not involved in this search at all. I, I think, there's things that I miss about Bob, I will, I will never be as good as he is with, um, reacting to resident concerns and resolving those, he, he's wonderful at it. Um, and I think he did an awesome job for all the years he was, he was here and trying to work with the resources he had and get the job done. But I, as I say, I think there's an opportunity to move the department, you know, forward, and we're gonna have big projects ahead of us in the future, and somebody who's had all those experiences, and some we haven't had. I don't know when we had the last tornado, but when I talked with Tom, it was a, unfortunately, an experience he got to deal with that, you know, we had to react to, and, and I, I hear that it went fair, fairly well, as, as tornado cleanup can go. Um, and so, I was looking for somebody who had a broader range of experiences.
I understand it, so, but, so you did not view Bob as a resource?
I did not.
But it's not to say that there wasn't a expert or content expert resource as part of the search committee, right?
Yeah, I always look to have someone who is a content matter expert involved, because I, I am not, you know, I'm, I'm more, um, my expertise is more in finance and HR, and while I have been the interim director and when I had to be, I'm not, I don't know all those things, and I'm not intimately involved in, say, the setting of water rates, I understand the, the theory and the process, but I'm not, I can't build a model. And so, I, I wanted to have somebody who'd done that job, do that, um, and offer us the perspective that, you know, Scott, as an HR professional, and myself as the administrator, might miss a fine detail that's important.
Thank you.
Can I say something on that?
Just grab a microphone, Scott.
This is the microphone up here.
Oh, okay.
Son? Yeah. So, Cece, I just want to let you know that before we started the process, I had several conversations with Bob. Bob reviewed all the job postings, and I met with him and talked about, in his opinions, the kinds of things that were important, uh, et cetera, and going through the positions.
But you didn't send him the resumes or ask if you knew any people-
I did not send him the resumes, and he did not interview them.
No.
And that was Scott Bragdon, HR Director.
Sorry.
Cece, do you have any other questions?
No.
Comments, concerns? Chris?
No.
All right. With that, I would move that the board ratify the appointment of Thomas Temple as Director of Public Works as recommended by the town administrator. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unopposed. Congratulations, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm forward to working with you. All right, and before he runs out, Scott, Bligh, thank you both very much for a very successful candidate search and getting the best guy for the job. Thank you. All right, our next item this evening is to please consider appointing a tax possession custodian for the purpose of auctioning off town-owned properties acquired through foreclosure.
So, unfortunately, um, not every owner of property in any community pays their taxes on a timely basis. It, it happens. Norfolk has a, a very good collection rate of approximately ninety-eight percent, but that means that two percent of, of persons or businesses that sometimes are delinquent in their taxes. Um, and so- They go into a process called tax title, and hopefully taxes are paid in that process. But eventually, if they're not paid, the town can acquire them through foreclosure, and they become a property of the, of the community. And so in your, in your book are 40 properties that the town has acquired over time, and some of them are as simple as a little part of a drainage ditch from a subdivision. They could be some landlocked property that's wetlands that an owner maybe didn't pay taxes on after a while for whatever the reason, and they, or they can be as, as significant as a, a single-family home, and we own one on Pine Road. So the town has a, has the opportunity to, once they have, once we own them, to actually sell them. Now, it's, the, the purpose is not necessarily to collect the outstanding taxes, because once they own them, it's really irrelevant how much the taxes owed were. But it's the ability to sell those to a willing buyer through an auction and obtain the best price that the town can for the properties, which in theory helps recoup what we hadn't collected, but more importantly, puts them back in the hands of owners who want to own those properties, utilize them in some way, and pay taxes on them regularly, which is our end, end goal. So we include for you in, in your book, the law on this that allows us to do so, and the, and the first step is to appoint a tax possession custodian, which is almost universally is the treasurer collector for the town, which in this case is Anne Marie Duggan. The town hasn't held an auction since 2012, and I don't have a reason why that, that is. And the process is basically to, to appoint that custodian, they and then work with our tax title council, which we've had for a number of years, to double-check all the records of these files, and they've already supported us through the tax title process. They're intimately familiar. They hire an auctioneer, and they assist the treasurer, the treasurer in putting together a marketing plan for the properties. Because our goal is to get as many interested buyers out there to come to an auction likely held in this room, hopefully in, if, if you give us the approval to go ahead, in May, to seek a, seek bids on the ones that are in yellow. Those are the ones we want to pursue in the near term, and receive, you know, a, a winning bid for each one of them, and we would accept the highest bid, and the costs for the auction are borne by the buyers. They pay a buyer's premium, which includes the legal work and the work of the auctioneer. So if somebody bid $50,000 for one of these properties, they would pay something above $50,000, and the town would receive $50,000. We would like to go ahead now, because we have had interest in the Pine Road property. There've had been a couple of people who have inquired, and as you can see from some of the notes, some of these other properties may be buildable. Some of them may have an interest by a butter who may want to increase the size of their property by buying an adjacent parcel. And the ones below either are not likely to bring a bid that would be in the town's best interest, or there's some further research we want to do to make sure that we are best prepared for those. So as I said, the narrow action we're asking you to take tonight is simply to appoint her to start that process, and our goal was to have an auction likely in May, so that any proceeds that we receive from it could go into the town's coffers and be able to be utilized next year for whatever purposes we want to put before town meeting or include in, in a future budget.
Um, oh, sorry. So in the first paragraph of the Section 77B, last sentence, first paragraph, "The custodian shall serve during the pleasure of the mayor or selectman, and shall receive as his compensation, if any, a sum fixed by the mayor or by the selectman." How much are you proposing to compensate for this role?
No more than her salary. She do not pay, she would not be paid any extra to do this work.
Then that solves all of my answers to the questions.
Be part of her, her, her regular duties.
We're spending money willy-nilly tonight, so it's nice. That's good.
Nope.
Do you have an estimated valuation on the properties in yellow?
I don't. I mean, we can go and, and look up the assessed value, but some of these, as you, as you look at the list, we have had for quite a long time, and I don't think we have made, it's not necessarily helpful to the town to, to reassess properties that we own. So part of what we need, the assistance of the auctioneer who does this daily and has actually held auctions for us previously, is to work with the assessors, work with our, our planner and the treasurer, and, and help us determine what we think the value is on all of these, and then market them to the town's best advantage to get the highest price for them. You know, a single-family home could bring, you know, a very good price. It could bring more than what the taxes had been.
Right, because that's the thing, right? All we get out of it, we could sell it for a million, billion dollars, and all we get out is whatever the tax obligation was. Plus, you get the whole lot?
We get the million, billion.
And but where does that go, then?
Goes into our, it would be part of our free cash calculation. So the only thing we don't get is the costs.
Sure, you have to pay the people to get...
But whatever people bid for those, that is the, all, the town's. Once we have owned the property for a year, we get to keep everything that we receive in the auction. So it's, this isn't something you do every six months. It's something you do when you have acquired, you know, some properties for which we can put an auction together, gather interest, and, and go forth and attempt to sell. And then, like I said, get them back into being, performing for the town, which is people using them for whatever their best use is and paying their taxes, because when 2% don't pay their taxes, it affects all other taxpayers, and, and that's not a good thing.
Chris? Questions?
No.
Cece, anything else?
No.
Very good. I would move that the board vote as provided under MGL Chapter 60, Section 77B, to appoint Anne Marie Duggan, Town Treasurer, as Tax Possession Custodian, who shall have the care, custody, management, and control over all property acquired by foreclosure, deed in lieu of foreclosure, or by treasurer's deed for unpaid taxes. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second heard. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Is that congratulations to Anne Marie, or condolences, or...
She's looking forward to working, she is looking forward to working on this. We see it, I mean, this is, it may be a one-time infusion of funds into our, into our free cash, but it may allow us to address roads, or funds for stabilization, or whatever other purposes, you know. Like I say, we don't do, we're not going to do these all the time, but we see it as an opportunity to make some ground in some areas we should. And, and for people who are interested in these properties, it's an opportunity for them.
Thank you nonetheless, Anne Marie. All right. Our next item tonight is to please discuss amendments to the board's public comment policy. Bligh, do you have any intro information for this, or...
So we received later this afternoon some input from Town Council on, on these, but I, I confirmed for him, this was a discussion tonight to just review these two versions and his initial thoughts, and we will probably discuss it again in another meeting.
So to refresh, at our previous meeting, we had discussed some opportunities in being able to move the needle from having open discussion in the course of the business being held within our meetings, more towards enhancing the efficiency of how we run our meetings by ensuring that public comment is solidified in two key areas, the beginning and end of the meeting, as opposed to throughout and intermediary between business items during the meeting. We had talked about, as a board, about there being some distinct opportunities in being able to consolidate some of those comments, and being able to get us to a place where we'd be able to effectively run through our agenda in a more efficient manner. And as such, we developed a, a draft for the public comment policy to the existing policy we have today for review tonight. In addition to that, and upon the heavy lobbying by unnamed people, we did also prepare a, a secondary draft, that instead of being so definitive to just two sections, beginning and ending of the meeting, that we allowed for very specific types of contributive comments during the course of the meeting for items that are specific to decisions or actions, and then removing the second public comment at the end of the meeting. So it would really mirror much of what we have today, but really look to define and pinpoint the type of commentary that we would be looking to hear throughout the course of a meeting. So as you can see here, Attorney Mello did make some suggestions, specifically on the, the second draft that we pointed out, and I did want to open it up to hear the board's opinion on which way we'd like to go in the next stage of our evaluation of public comment policy.
I like the second draft. I think it's a, I think it's a much better approach. It still allows public comment, and again, it keeps the moving, the, the meeting moving, but still allows if someone has some valuable information to provide. I think David made a good point tonight, is maybe you, you hate to say, make it 30 seconds or a minute, but, you know, keep it reasonable, so it doesn't become a speech. So I think that was a good point on David's part tonight.
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, I do think, on the one hand, logistically, if you've got an, an agenda item where you're going to vote on something, that gives people time to give you their sage piece of information well in advance of the meeting, so that we're not bogged down in colloquies. But that being said, I also get that maybe something occurs to someone, or there's, through the organic communication up at the, at the bench, for lack of a better term, they, some, you know, something comes up to be able to weigh in. If you are a person who has legitimate information, not, you know, I read, I spoke to someone whose uncle's cousin's brother also read, like, somebody who has cogent, firsthand, helpful information. Now, you can't draft that in, so I suppose to a degree, you just hope that everybody adheres to it, and if not, then, then the chair's role is to move people along and threaten them with all sorts of floggings.
Wow.
Wet noodles and the like. But yeah, I like it. I think that, you know, there's people who have lots of information, who have experience, and who, while we don't necessarily need, you know, to go back to the beginning of time and come forward, may have some information that's helpful. So yeah, I agree.
Very good. Okay, so just to run through very quickly, the changes that we'll be voting on with the second draft of our public comment policy will be a little bit of definition in the applicability section, as was noted by Attorney Mello, that will highlight the specifics around what we're going to be looking to accept as we go through the course of the items within our agenda. In Section C, we added a point that all speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner. Speakers must begin their remarks by stating their name, town, city, of residence, and affiliation. In Section E, we identified that written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the board before or after the meeting for the board members' review and consideration at an appropriate time. We added Section F, for speakers who require reasonable accommodations on the basis of speech-related disability, or who require language interpretation services, may be allotted a total of five minutes to present their material. Speakers must notify the Select Board by telephone or email at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting if they wish to request an extension of time for one of these reasons. In Section G, we have the public comment may concern items that are not on the Select Board's agenda but must fall within the scope of the Select Board's authority. So that's going to be a big item that I look to, forward to enforcing diligently. In Section H, we have that speakers may offer such criticisms of town operations and policies as concern them, but in public session, the board will not hear personal complaints about town hall employees or others whose performance is outside of the scope of the board's authority. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means for disposition, disposition of legitimate complaints involving employees. And that is the summary of everything that we're looking to implement with this new revision. Do you have any final comments or concerns?
I don't.
Cece?
Can I just ask a question? On, on H, the, the version that Town Council had sent, he crossed out the word "hall" on town hall employees.
Yeah, he read it.
So that...
I read "hall"?
Read, so I just wanted to ask, we have more employees than just work in town hall, so are, does the board want to have the, the more broad description than just...
I think the "hall" should be stricken. I think he just accidentally read it.
Okay, just wanted, I just wanted to make sure.
The formatting, yep.
Okay.
Town employees is the correct way we should be phrasing it.
Great. Thank you.
All right. So with that, I would move that the board accept the revised Select Board public comment policy.
Go ahead.
So we had this listed as discussion tonight?
We did. That's why there's no motion, and I had to ad lib at the end.
What are you talking about?
So we'll come up with a final version of this based on the edits, and we'll vote on it in the next meeting?
Yes.
Spent a lot of time writing it. I was just excited to vote on it.
But now you have something to look forward to for the next time.
That's right. Look at that. Always keep the carrot, right?
Yep. And all your presence at once.
Do you want any public input to this or not at this point?
We'll open it up for short comments on anybody who has any opinions on the revised draft that we'll be looking to implement. Thumbs up is what I see. All right. That's, that's our public input. All right. Looks like we have... Microphone, please, Anne Marie. Thank you.
At the beginning of the meeting, you said something about unfounded comments. Who, who would determine whether they're founded or unfounded?
Me.
On the basis of?
My knowledge.
And if it doesn't extend to what's being discussed, then what?
If it doesn't extend to what's being discussed. What do you mean?
Well, I mean, how would, how would you know whether whatever somebody says is founded or unfounded? How would you know?
If I do know, then I'll be the one to step up and say that it is not true, or it is not founded. But if I don't know, I'm not going to step in just on what I think is right and not right.
Okay. All right. Just wondered.
Yep. All right. So that brings us to our last item this evening. We'll be considering the following warrants, and that is Cece.
So I move that the board approve the following warrant, January 28th, 2020, $610,956.28.
Second.
Here a second? Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 There we go. Little objection at the end, never hurt anybody.
Yeah, I was like, I sensed...
All right. So since we listed it in anticipation of the potential of bringing in the second public comment period, I will open it up for one more public comment. If anybody wishes to come up and share something new with the board that hasn't been shared already tonight, you're more than welcome to come up. Do you have any takers? Mr. Alex, I'm going to emphasize new, and welcome you to come up.
To where we were going to auction off property?
Come right up. Thank you, sir.
On the auctioning off of the property, can the CPC meet high bidder and own the property?
Excellent question, to which we will get an answer.
This property could be used in lieu of contractors, building, buildings for us and property we basically don't own. We could own some buildings. It could be a building that...
Well, we already own it. We, we could choose not to sell it, I suppose, is a way, a different way to look at it. This is the town's today.
Right. Eminent domain. The town owns the property.
We own it.
Right.
It's, we can choose to sell it or not sell it. This is, and I should have mentioned earlier, we...
On the auctioning off of the property, can the CPC meet high bidder and own the property?
Excellent question, to which we will get an answer.
This property could be used in lieu of contractors building buildings for us on property we basically don't own. We could own some buildings. It could be a building that...
Well, we already own it. We could choose not to sell it, I suppose, is a different way to look at it. This is the town's today.
Right. Eminent domain. The town owns the property.
We own it.
Right.
We can choose to sell it or not sell it. This is, and I should have mentioned earlier, we had various town departments look at these to ask the question internally, are there any of these that we think we have a good business reason to keep? But maybe we need to go a little further. This is not exactly the list. This list could change. If we took, for some reason, another property became on the list before the auction, we could add one, or we could decide there's something we want to keep. So maybe you can see me afterwards, Mr. Alex.
I'm just throwing it out there. Because also, we get a certain percentage of construction from when there is a new development going in. So instead of receiving all of the money to put up a completely new house, we may have a piece of property that could be refurbished, and we put the rest of the money in our pockets.
Something to learn more about.
Adds a list of follow-ups. Thank you, sir. Anybody else for public comment this evening? All right, I'm hearing none. With that, I would move that the board adjourn for the evening.
Second.
Here a second. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Have a good night.